Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Cholo City Council to order by roll call. We have all council members present with the exception of Councilwoman Kavas. I'd like to welcome those who are viewing tonight on City 56, as well as those that are with us here tonight in the audience. Would like to welcome those who may be watching by some other means of streaming on the internet as well. I'd like to begin tonight with an invocation of Ask Councilmember Kelly if it lead us in invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Hatch. Those who'd like to join with us, please stand.
Our Father in heaven, I do thank you for the very privilege that I have of living here in this mountain in Cholo. Thank you for the staff we have, the council members that I have to serve with, and ask your blessing on our service personnel at home and abroad, and for our first responders, public safety. Thank you for all the blessings of the moisture that we received this year. Ask that you'd give us wisdom as we go through this meeting tonight. We might do the things that are the very best for the city of Cholo and our service to Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Kelly and Councilmember Hatch. Appreciate that. First item we have tonight is call to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that's within the jurisdiction of the city and that's not on the agenda may do so at this time, know that your time is limited to three minutes, and we cannot respond to it, but we can give direction. We do have an item here. Mr. Terry Hill of the VFW Post 9907.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Terry Hill. I'm the incoming Senior Vice Commander of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 9907 here in Cholo. I've got a couple items I'd like to address. First, I'd like to report to the City Council that the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 9907 will be receiving the National Community Service Award in Orlando, Florida at the National VFW Convention in July, week of the 22nd of July. From May 1st, 2018 to April 30th, 2019, members of the Post recorded 7,200 hours of community service and $86,850.04 in money donated to other causes, as well as material items like loan, the loan of hospital equipment to service the veterans in the community and families of veterans in the community, as well as use of our hall at no expense. They also recorded over 35,000 miles in providing community service. This award only goes out to outstanding VFW Posts in the nation who have to recognize their outstanding community service, and it will be the third time our Post has received this prestigious award. Next, I would like to invite everyone. This coming Monday is Memorial Day. It's the one day each year where we choose to honor those who have fallen in the service of their nation in war. We would like to invite the mayor, the council members, and the public to come and join with us in the ceremony that we will, we do each year at the Cholo Cemetery at 10 o'clock in the morning on Memorial Day. This Saturday, we will be placing flags on deceased veterans at seven different cemeteries within the county and one in Apache County, Vernon. We do Adair. How many people know where Adair is or was?
It is.
And the bottom of Bull's Hollow. But we do Burton and, as well as Cholo Cemetery, we do Burton and Clay Springs and Pinedale. We get out there and Shumway. I do Shumway because that's where I live. And Colonel John Hunziker will be, United States Army retired, will be our, will give the keynote address at the ceremony, during the ceremony. So members of the Post and Boy Scout Troop 733 will be out putting flags on, on the graves on Saturday. One final item. If you play golf, we do have a golf tournament coming up as a fundraiser for our programs on the 22nd of June. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hill, and congratulations on your award that you'll be receiving. That's fantastic. Appreciate your service.
Jack indicated, I should tell you, I get to go and get the award.
That's great. Anyone else on? Call to the public. I see no one else moved. I'll close call to the public and come back to item six, Special Events. We have a presentation of a semi-annual report by the Cholo Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Applegate.
Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. Mr. Cap, can you do me a favor? If, if you're going to run that PowerPoint, I appreciate it if you did, and I'll flip these pages I have at the same time you, be an indication for you to flip the chart. Does that sound good?
Yeah, let me know if I missed something at all.
You're the man. Appreciate it. I'll take a few minutes longer than I normally take on a quarterly report tonight, and I appreciate the opportunity to spend some time with you in doing that. In October of this past year, October 2018, I met with the Chamber Board of Directors in a meeting that we had called the Landscape is Changing, identifying some of the changes that are happening in the landscape of the Chambers of Commerce in rural Arizona, specifically in the Cholo Chamber of Commerce. From that meeting spawned another meeting where we invited some county leaders, some city leaders from Cholo, a couple of members of business owners in Cholo, and a great majority of the Board of Directors from the Chamber of Commerce. And from that meeting identified many, many trends that are happening in chambers, specifically Cholo Chamber of Commerce, and identified two main things, which are, one, the face of the Chamber of Commerce in Cholo will probably change, and it'll put on its new face and look differently in the days and years to come. Along with that, the TIC, the Tourist Information Center in the city of Cholo, will probably also have some adjustments in how it does what it does because of the changes that, the trends that we've seen. And so I want to spend some tonight going over my normal quarterly report with you, and then also talk about some of these changes. My plea at the end will be for the council to consider an opportunity for the council, the city of Cholo, and the Chamber of Commerce to work together in a plan that we can formulate of how this change would come about and the best things that'll happen for the local businesses and in our community as we look at the Tourist Information Center and the Chamber of Commerce in the days to come. So with that, the normal numbers that you see from the Tourist Information Center, this is the boring page because you want the pages after that, but this shows according to numbers, January, February, March, for the number of people that have come into the TIC over that period of time, visitor count, the people that have come in. So January, 147 members, February, 98, and then March, 144. A total of members that are people that have come into the TIC in the first quarter of 385. But what you really want to look at is how that contrasts with 2018, which is the next slide. Thank you, Bill. And so you can see 2018 first quarter and 2019 first quarter in your upper left-hand corner of the slide there, showing a total visitor count of 674 for 2018 versus the 385. A trend that you guys know about and you've seen, and we've witnessed over the past five years that I've reported to you. I would pose to you, though, as you look at this particular quarter, that there's more to it than just that normal trend, which probably is the weather. You can, you can just about walk into the Chamber of Commerce on any given day and know how busy you're going to be based on the sun, or the rain, or the snow, or the wind, and know we're going to have a busy day or not. And so that's probably a huge reflection of the numbers that you see in the first quarter of 2019. So more significantly, that is where these people come from. And so that next slide shows a pie chart of where these folks are coming into our Chamber of Commerce from. Of course, the greater majority, which is always the biggest of all of them, 48%, shows that they're coming in from out of state. The smallest number at, I don't know the percentage, I think it's 11% is, it's got to be less than that, 3%, is coming in from foreign countries, and then 25 and 24% coming in from local and in-state respectively. To the right of that, there's a small table or Excel spreadsheet chart that I put together. You'll probably recall the last time I visited with the council, we talked about this trend, and we also talked about the suspicion, which is the majority of people that come into the Chamber or come into the Tourist Information Center these days are seniors, are older folks. And so at that point, we said, let's start tracking that and see if we can. So there's a result of the first parts of tracking it. You see the Aprils in there, which we usually don't see in the first quarter because we're reporting this at this later date, but we get to see January, February, March, and April, and how we broke it up by age. So 0 to 20, 20 to 50, and then 50 plus. And the number of people that are not coming in that are younger than 29, or 6 and then 13 in March and April, none in January and February at all, 20 to 50, 9, 5, I'm sorry, 9, 5, 19, and 28. And then in April, members or people that come in that are 50 and over, 28, 38, 73, and 362. A number that you can see, again, going back to my statement about the weather, when our weather changes in April, and when that sun starts coming out, we start getting a little busier, and that's a reflection of what you're seeing right there. One of the trends that I'm going to talk to you about has to do with also membership in the Chamber of Commerce. And I've shown you this slide right here because this is showing membership year-to-date in the, in the Chamber of Commerce. And this is, I'm going to show you local versus corporate members, local businesses versus corporate members. But I want, what I want to show you here is it's an expansion versus drop on a chart, and shows the number of new members that we have to the Chamber of Commerce in 2018 versus what we had in 2018, and then the drops 2018 versus 2019. So over the course of the first four months of the year, 15 new members and three dropped members. If you're curious of who they are below, you'll see names spelled out there in expansion, and then a few names in drops. With a number next to it, that number denotes the month that they joined or dropped. And so what's good about this chart is that that's numbers up from what it usually is by the first quarter, first part of the quarter, first part of the year. And so they're all local members that are joining the chamber, and you'll see the next report in days to come. Future May is even better. This next is just your standard P and L, which you guys have seen a million times, and it almost looks exactly like this every first quarter. Expenses are, incomes up a little bit more than we projected, expenses are down a little bit more than we projected, and so our net is a little bit better than what we projected. But that's pretty normal for the first quarter. Nothing tremendously exciting to look at there. Onto the trends that we've talked about. Again, we titled this The Landscape is Changing. We weren't sure what to call. But what I'm going to identify is things that we know from 2012 to 2018 from historical data that I have pulled out. Membership and corporate membership is down. Mostly it's corporate membership, and we'll look at some of these and why. President's Club membership also down. President's Club, for those that don't know, are a list of additional benefits to the Chamber of Commerce, and if you want those additional benefits, you pay one fee for President's Club, and you get the list of all those benefits included in that. But that membership is also down. Business sponsorship, down over that past, that past five years. And that's talking about events that we do throughout the city, activities and sponsorships to those kinds of things. Participation in networking and social groups, that's not going to be displayed or demonstrated on the bar chart that I'm going to show you, but I do want to add that to that because it's a trend that we've noticed. I specifically have noticed it in speaking with, in the last three to four years, probably over 25 Chambers of Commerce throughout the rural Arizona. Challenges. There's me. What are some challenges that your experiences and, you know, how can we compare notes, kind of thing like that? Inevitably, in that conversation consistently is this idea that my networking groups are, you know, the number of people come out is way less, or, or the social groups that I have. And for us, it'd be like our Chamber of Breakfast, or our Business After Hours, or the meetings that we have, those networkings, the numbers are way down in what they used to be in the past five years. Solutions to those conversations are usually taking your idea that you did, or your idea that you did, and remake that in my area because we haven't done that. But usually what it becomes is a reuse of an idea that we've already tried before, and we're running out of ideas of how to get people out to these kinds of events. And so they're all kind of being reused. And then the last bullet point on there is the number that you guys already know, visitation in the Chambers of Commerce, specifically the TIC numbers in the Cholo Chamber, is a trend that's going in the downward direction. So I want to just spend a little bit more and talk about these. Corporate members, these are a list of, not all, not comprehensive, but the majority of the ones that just came to me as I sat down with part of my staff of, of corporate members, who, these are people that used to be members of the Chamber of the Commerce, who are no longer members of the Chamber of Commerce. And then our conversation with them wasn't because it was a local decision, it was because it was a corporate decision. I think the first thing that people, and I'm not talking to the council, but just anybody's listening, needs to understand from a list like that is not to look at these group of companies as companies that are not supporting the local Chamber of Commerce and the local economy and the local businesses and things like that, because they are. Usually, the decisions to be not members of the Chamber had to do from something that was above their head. It was at a corporate level. But many of them do a lot of things that they can do to support the local economy and activities and events that are going on here. I won't read the entire list. I will point out a couple. Chase Bank, for instance, was one, that even two years after corporate said, we're not going to be members of the Chamber of Commerce, not in Cholo, but across the nation, the local leadership or management team there pooled their money together, their own personal money, to continue to be a member of the Chamber of Commerce until it got to be burdensome for them, and they're no longer, and that management changed anyway, but they're no longer members of the Chamber of Commerce anyway. And other change that we've seen in, in the city, Panda Express, for instance, has never become a member. That was done, our advice through corporations, long before the Panda Express people got here. We have a Culvers that we know have pulled permits, and hopefully we'll see them in town someday. We have here word of Baskin Robbins coming to town. The, the opportunity for them to be members of the Chamber of Commerce is doubtful, just because corporations are starting to not do that. The biggest conversation is that their, their marketing and promotion dollars are going somewhere else and not locally in the Chamber of Commerce. So. The next sheet is a bar graph, and this is a, from 2012 to 2018, a comparison of each of those years of membership, of sponsorships, and of President's Club. And this is a revenue sheet. So this is showing income that's coming to the Chamber of Commerce through those streams. And you can see from 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17, the biggest tallest bar there, the green one, is membership in the chamber, and how that has got that downward trend. The blue bar, which I started tracking in 14, and did not have all of it before that, but in 14 I started tracking it, and you can see, starting in 15, it really started going down and continues to do that. Those are, again, sponsorships and events that we do, like Cholo Days, for instance, and other ones throughout the year. The yellow is that short bar, but it's a trend in President's Club, and so that's gone down from 96 a year, $9,600 a year, all the way down to $3,700 a year. So that's dwindling and continuing to dwindle. So the question becomes, why are we seeing these trends? And most of the answers you guys know, or some of them you guys know, the gleaning, you know, one that's the, the most important one is because we market differently than we marketed, and we promote ourselves differently than we did five years ago. Digital marketing era is now here strong, and the social marketing era is here strong. And so that's ways that people are marketing. For instance, five years ago, when we wanted to learn about a business, or 10 years ago, we wanted to learn about a business, we went to a, a networking event or a social event where those businesses were promoting themselves, or a group of businesses were at, and we could network with them. We don't do that as much as we used to anymore. It's done online. And so it's done with the network. And of course, we don't, we don't look in that phone book or, or go to that event to find out if we should go over here and buy pizza. We go online and look at it, and we see five stars, and, you know, then we go over to the pizza place. That's how it works. Are we alone? No, absolutely not. We're not alone. Near as I can tell, and this has happened to rural Chambers of Commerce across the state of Arizona, and of course, you'd, you'd project from there that we're not the only state. This is happening across the country just because of the changes that are happening. And then the last part of that question is, is it temporary? And all projections that we look at say that the way we market and way we promote ourselves digitally is never going to change. As a matter of fact, it's probably going to continue to go in that direction. So change is coming, is what, is what we talked about at the beginning there. There are still two very important groups that we visit or that we, that we continue to serve in the Tourist Information Center. And I want to talk about those two groups briefly. One of those groups are new homeowners. They wait till the day is sunny and shining, even though if they've been here for two months or three months, and they show up to the Chamber of Commerce, and they want to know, where do I get all the information about what's going on in our town? And tell me about the places to eat, and where's the best place for this and that and the other thing? And of course, we direct them to the Chamber's website, and we direct them to the city's website, and we direct them to pickcholo.com, and we turn on the TV, and we show them a map of the area, and we give them the, you know, the whole rundown of everything that they can get, probably overload them. But what's more importantly, I think, is that we help them feel welcome, and we, we hold their hand and let them know what's going on and where they can find information. I think the great hope there is that they will, you know, call their friend back home and say, hey, when you're retiring in a year or two, you really need to look at Cholo because these guys are just, town's great, and the people are great, and the area's great, and we just love it here, and there's a lot of things going on. So that's, you know, obviously what our hope is there. The other group that we serve consistently, it was pointed out in the numbers we saw earlier, which are those that are 50 and older. It's probably older than that. We weren't sure where to make that cutoff number. We're happy to adjust it if, if the council thinks that they'd like to see something different, love to adjust it. But that's where we put it, 50 and over was where we put that. But those folks come in every day, and when it's busy, there's not a half an hour that goes by that we don't turn on the big screen TV and show them a map of the area, and help them know where they are, and where they can get a meal, and where they can stay that night, and answer all those questions. And they're overly appreciative of, of the help that we give them. It's important, I think, for the health of the city and for businesses locally, that those groups continue to get served in a very smart way, because they are very appreciative. It's, it's, that's a good part of the job when they, when they come in and they're just thankful that we just helped them out and answered all their questions, and they know exactly what they're going to do, and they're going to have fun in Cholo and the White Mountain area. So that works out really good. So, whoa. So what now? What now? I think the best I think for us to do is the Board of Directors, the Cholo Chamber Board of Directors, has worked on and still has a group of, most of them are part of them, as a subcommittee, we want to invite parts of, or whoever wants to, the city wants to designate. Steve North has been part of that. Mr. Motors, I think, been part of at least one of those meetings. We've had some members of county leadership there, and a couple businesses invited to a committee meeting to sit down and talk about what are, what do these changes look like, and put a plan together in place that says, there's a smart way to do this, to, to separate a TIC and a Chamber of Commerce. And what does a TIC look like, and how do we have it, and where does it go? And what does the Chamber of Commerce look like in light of all of these many trends? And so the great hope is that the council will sit down with us and say, let's meet, let's come up with a plan that makes the best sense for the city of Cholo as we make these changes in the coming days and months and weeks and years and whatever it is, whenever the change is going to come. But I think it's inevitable that it will. I think there's a smart way to make it happen, and that's what I'd like the council to consider as we move, continue to move forward. So that's all I have for you tonight. Please ask me any questions that you would like.
Thank you, Mr. Applegate. Appreciate that. Any questions of council?
Thank you.
All right. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Next item, he has a presentation of changes to fiscal year 2020, city management recommended budget and draft tentative budget for fiscal year, June 30th, 2020. Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. So the presentation we have prepared for tonight, when we last came to the council, we went over a recommended budget. And as part of that recommended budget, we go through and try and incorporate all the changes that the council has asked us to incorporate and build those into the tentative budget. So we have a draft tentative budget tonight to go through quickly. Not a lot of changes. Some of the dollar amounts have changed. Big chunks of those are from project carryovers, which we expect a lot of our projects carry over for multiple budget years, mainly due to the short construction season for us. Our budget process, we keep very public. We post our budget calendar on the website. We invite the public to come to two budget town halls. And of course, they're always welcome to come to our study sessions and our regular council meetings. So tonight, we have the draft tentative budget, just to review some changes. And then our next meeting on June 4th, we'll need to adopt a tentative budget. And then on June 18th, we'll adopt the final budget. And then our only meeting in July will adopt the secondary tax rate for the streetlight improvement This graphic shows our performance for expenses on our budget versus actual, the, the budget being in blue and the red are the actual. You can see that we've demonstrated that we underspend our budget each year. So we, we like to practice fiscal conservatism and just be really conscious of how we spend our dollars, and we feel like we do a good job keeping track of our budget and expenses. First, we're going to talk about changes.
Back up to that. I just want to clarify, if we can, just because we didn't spend what we budgeted, doesn't mean we have a surplus of like $30 million each year or two that we're carrying forward. So
That's correct.
I just want people to understand, you know, because you have a budget, just because we budgeted that would have this much actual, doesn't mean that the actual came in higher and we have excess dollars setting around. If you looked at this, you'd say, well, there's 30, 60, 90, 120 million dollars that the city should be flush. Well, that's not the case.
Yeah. A lot of that money that you're speaking about, Mayor, is, are some of the larger projects. We have to plan to complete projects in the fiscal year, but when we don't, that money carries to the next fiscal year. And then we also have monies that we're saving. We have monies in reserves. We have monies we're saving for projects. So that's a good point. Thank you. On the revenue side, when we adopt a budget, the state law requires that we adopt an amount for our expenditure limitation, but we also have to have a balanced budget. So our revenues have to match our expenditure. So when we brought a recommended budget to the council for revenues, it was at 41 million. And then we had to make a few modifications. A lot of these modifications are due to revenue estimates. So when we are working our way through the budget, we have to decide at some point how much we think we're going to spend in this fiscal year and how much we're going to spend next year. So most of those modifications, you see in the 317,000, have to do with carryovers and us trying to update our estimates, so we're as close as we can be by the end of the year. So our new draft tentative budget number is 41,781,000 on the revenue side. Next, we have broken down the unbudgeted reserves for general fund. We currently have 2.9 million in this year's budget for 2020. We currently have two point nine million in this year's budget for 2020. One question that staff does have for the council is, as you recall, we did budget to spend an additional three million dollars to help our situation with the public safety retirement system. And due to the timing and us paying that money July 1st, it didn't show up in the actuarial for last year. So what we're proposing is that we take some of this unbudgeted reserve and hold that in anticipation of paying up to a million dollars in 21's budget, that we could pay June 30th of this year, of this upcoming fiscal year. And that would pay it one day earlier. And then when the new budget year hits, that money would go back into reserves. So it's still contingent on our sales tax and the status of our budget, whether we could actually do it. But if we put that money and set it aside for that payment, it allows it, allows us to pay it one day early and see the benefit about a year earlier on the actuarial. So if the council's okay with that, I know we can't make motions and we're not looking for that tonight. We're just looking for the.
Let me ask a question. Is this basically just an accounting procedure and it's not costing any more to the city to do that, is it?
That's correct. It's, it's something we have to put in the budget. It's a timing thing, basically, with the accounting. The auditors and the accounting processes don't allow us to pay it out of a prior year if it's budgeted for the next year. So we're just trying to get it in there early. But we feel like if things keep going the way they're going, we'll be able to afford to do it. And if they don't, then we just won't do it. But the money will be there in the budget so we can do it if we choose, if the council chooses. Any questions on that? Okay. And then we have a couple of months of operating for, for most of our funds. We're not quite there with wastewater, but we're getting closer. Water, we have two full months of operating. And then we've been setting aside money each year for the water treatment plant, and that will be at one point five million for the 2020 budget. The changes here with our fund balance, a lot of these are tied to project carryovers. The increase in revenue, like I said, when we estimate a project, we estimate we're going to spend X amount of dollars in the current fiscal year. And those dollars that we don't spend roll into the fund balance and are available to spend in the next fiscal year, which would be 20. So that's the bulk of your changes there for the revenue. On the expenditure side, we have a little over three million in changes or modifications, which brings the new number to fifty-one point five million. And I don't want to get into each individual line item here, but this is the slide in, and you'll see in yellow, the changes for individual projects and what the recommended budget was and the changes, and then what the new budget's going to be. In a lot, in a lot of cases, these numbers, when we carry them, it's just going to increase the budget for 20, but we're not spending any additional money that wasn't already programmed. It's just across two years or moving from one year to the next. There any questions on the, any of those specific projects? We have a couple of slides here with just all the projects. And, and one example is the, for the water storage tank maintenance, we have two hundred thousand, and we're going to carry fifty of that two hundred thousand into next year. So we'll have two hundred and fifty thousand to run that project for the next year. So that's kind of how the process works for carryovers. For the non-project carryovers, the other component is we just look at expenditures and we see areas where we can, haven't spent all the money, but we think we need to move it to a different year. It may not be as large as a capital project, but our two large items here, number one is the insurance premiums. The second item down, we learned that we were going to get a premium rebate from the risk pool, and they're going to rebate two hundred and eight thousand dollars. So in 2020, our premium will be cut in half, basically. Another item is just operating transfers out. Whenever we don't complete projects, then the transfers to other funds is reduced because those projects are going to be done in a future year. Any questions on modifications? I think the last slide we have for you tonight has to do with the sanitation rate or the rate for regular and recycling trash. When we had our last study session, we didn't have the final numbers yet from Waste Management on what they were going to propose as an increase. There are basically two components. We have a fuel component, and then we have a CPI adjustment. So our current for regular and recycling is fourteen dollars and eighty cents. And then for each extra regular cart, it's six dollars and thirty-nine cents. So if you don't have an extra cart, you're paying fourteen eighty per month. If you have one extra cart, you're paying twenty-one nineteen per month, and then additional six thirty-nine for each additional cart. So we have two options here for rate increase. Option one would be to pass on all of the rate increase to the customers, and that would be a total of twenty-two forty cents for a customer that has one regular cart, one recycle cart, and then one extra cart.
Let me just say that most customers just have the regular and the recycle, so it wouldn't be.
Yeah, most customers are going to be fourteen eighty. So option two would be what staff is, is recommending, and that would be that we allow the sanitation fund, which has a fund balance of about sixty-five thousand dollars, to absorb about half of the rate increase that's coming from Waste Management, which is going to be about between fifteen and seventeen thousand dollars. And then therefore reducing their monthly rate. So if they just have one can and one recycle, it's going to go from fourteen eighty to fifteen oh nine. If they have an extra can, then it would go up proportionately based on that. So most customers would see an increase of about twenty-nine cents per month if we allow the fund, the balance of the fund, to absorb the increase. So for us to bring back the tentative budget for adoption, we would just need to know which option the council would like to see us go with on that.
What are we doing now? Are we, are the customer paying for, I know we've had increases in the past, a customer paying for all the increases, or is the city helping?
There have been a couple of different scenarios. We've, we allowed the fund balance to absorb some of it three years ago. Couple of years ago, we didn't have an increase from Waste Management. And then last year, the increase was absorbed by the customer. So we've kind of done a little bit of each.
Could you bring back and show us if we did a combination of, say, if we absorbed the increase of the regular and the, and the one, you know, just the regular and cart, but let the person who has the extra cart pay their full fee, but we just subsidize those that just are standard?
Yeah, that's probably ninety percent of it. So I would say it, it would shave off a couple thousand dollars if you let them pay for the extra cans a hundred percent.
You know, possibly maybe, you know, that.
There aren't very many customers, I'm wanting to say around a hundred, that have the extra can, and then there's maybe twenty that have two extra cans, but most people have.
Not that big a deal.
Right.
Probably not worth looking at.
We know the council can't make a decision. We just were wondering if we could get some thoughts from you so we can put it in tentative budget.
Well, I was just going to say, if we have extra that we could do without putting ourselves in, in a hardship, that I'd rather do that, you know, help subsidize some of these increases rather than pass them on myself.
We think the fund can't absorb that this year. So if we don't hear anything from any council members this week, we may, we'll probably put it in that way.
Yeah. That's all I have for the presentation tonight. Thank you.
I would just like one other thing. If Mr. Cup could look at a little bit here, I know we have a million and a half in our waste, not wastewater, but our water treatment plant. If we could just at some point in time have kind of a number as to what we think a water treatment plant's going to possibly cost us?
We had an estimate put together, it's been probably seven or eight years, and it was three point eight million, I believe, right in that ballpark.
Maybe we brought that number up the current, so we kind of knew if we're gaining on it or, or falling behind, so that we at least are gaining towards it instead of falling behind, I think.
We can provide that for you, sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
Other council? Appreciate your report. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Next item we have is the consent calendar. Is there any items that need to be pulled or reviewed on the consent calendar? Yeah, I'll go over those. We have a consideration of a final acceptance for runway oh six two four, a rehabilitation project to the Sholo Airport. We have a consideration of operating agreements with enterprise leasing companies of Phoenix, Hatch Toyota, Sholo Ford, to provide rental services at the regional airport. And we have a consideration of adoption of pension fund policy for the AP, APSRS retirement system. Consideration of acceptance of South White Mountain Road Sewer, Bonbrook to Park Freeway. Consideration of a metal lease agreement with Ethan Ellsworth. A consideration of resolution R two zero nineteen thirteen approving submitting application for two nineteen bill, formerly Tiger Grants for Scott Ranch Road and Bridge Project. And then the minutes of the April eighteenth meeting, study session, and the regular meeting of May seventh, two thousand and nineteen. Look for a motion. You have a motion by Vice Mayor, is there a second? Second by council member Critten. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Pass six to zero. Thank you. Next item we have is a new business, a public hearing, a project for fiscal year 2019 Community Development Block Grant, Special Projects Funds. Mr. Johnson.
Where's Lisa? Thank you. Approximately three hundred thousand dollars in federal funding is available on a competitive basis through the Community Development Block Grant State Special Project Account. This program funds projects to assist persons of low to moderate income to prevent or eliminate slums or blight, or to solve an urgent need or health hazard. The first public hearing regarding CDBG State Special Project Funding was held April eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, to obtain community input on the use of CDBG funds. No public input was received. Tonight's public hearing is to solicit input to help the council select the final CDBG project for submittal and to adopt an application and applicable resolution. City staff recommends using CDBG State Special Project Funds for constructing a four hundred and thirteen square foot addition to the seniors center, senior center kitchen, which provides food to community members with low to moderate incomes through Meals on Wheels Program and Congregate Meals at the Senior Center. The proposed kitchen expansion will add much-needed storage space for bulk items and increase cold storage capacity for perishable food. The CDBG State Special Project Grant requires an applicant match. The city is committing local funds of eighteen thousand, six hundred dollars and internal project oversight costs in the form of cash and resources as leverage for fiscal year 2019 CDBG State Special Project Funds for the match requirement to assist in financing, constructing a four hundred and thirteen square foot kitchen expansion at the Sholo Senior Center and purchasing a walk-in freezer and a commercial refrigerator.
Thank you. Councilmember Critten.
Lisa, how?
Sorry, Lisa's unable to be here tonight. So you get me.
Okay. How, how long do you think that this expansion will last before we will be adding to that kitchen again?
That is a good question that I don't have the answer to.
I, I, I'll just answer that a little bit. I think they've maximizing the space over there at that property for that kitchen. I don't think we can add much more to that kitchen area. That's why it was limited to four hundred and thirteen square feet.
Pretty much maxed out. Any other questions? Comments? Okay. This time I need to open this to a public hearing. If there's anyone from the public that would like to speak on this matter, a public hearing is now open. See nobody move for public hearing. I'll cause public hearing and bring it back to council for a motion on the resolution Vice Mayor.
I got a question on, okay, there's two different motions we could do. Which, which one is the better, or do we need to do both of them?
Need to do both.
We need to do both.
They're different resolutions. One is to submit the application, the other is to commit the fund. You need to go.
Okay. I move to adopt resolution number R twenty nineteen dash eleven, authorizing submitting then application for fiscal year 2019 Community Block Grant State Special Project Fund to finance construction of four hundred and thirteen feet, square feet kitchen expansion in Sholo Senior Center and purchase of a walk-in freezer and a commercial refrigerator.
Motion, is there a second? Second by council member Hatch. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Pass six to zero. Next, I look for a motion to adopt resolution R two zero nineteen dash twelve. Vice Mayor.
I move to adopt resolution R twenty nineteen dash twelve, committing local funds of eighteen thousand, six hundred dollars and internal project oversight cost in the form of cash and resources to leverage the fiscal year 2019 Community Development Block Grant State Special Project Fund to finance construction in, on a four hundred and thirteen square foot kitchen expansion in the Sholo Senior Center and a purchase of a walk-in freezer and commercial refrigerator.
Have a motion, is there a second? Second by council member Hatch. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Yeah, pass six to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate that. Next item is item eight C, consideration of an application submitted by James Edward Girardi, or I'm sorry, Gerard, on behalf of the White Mountain Bay Submarine Veterans for Special Event Liquor License for a hangar dance at the Sholo Regional Airport. Mrs. Tammer Reedhead.
Thank you, Mayor. James Edward Gerard, representing the White Mountain Bay Submarine Veterans, submitted an application for a special event liquor license for the hangar dance on August third from four to eleven fifty-nine P M., which will be held in hangar number one at the Sholo Regional Airport. This application is to allow selling alcohol during the dinner and dance within the ninety-six by ninety-six foot enclosed hangar. The alcohol will be sold and consumed within the hangar only, with five or six Navajo County Sheriff's Auxiliary Members stationed at the entrances and exits to ensure no alcohol leaves the premises. The Sholo Police Department performed a background check on the applicant and found nothing that would preclude approval of this special event liquor license. The application and action taken by the council will be forwarded to the Department of Liquor Licenses and Control. Unlike regular liquor licenses, the council's decision for this application will be final.
Thank you. Councilmember Critten.
I move to approve the application submitted by James Edward Gerard on behalf of the White Mountain Bay Submarine Veterans for a special events liquor license for the hangar dance on August third at the Sholo Regional Airport.
You have a motion, you have a second by council member Leach. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Pass six to zero. Thank you. Next item we have is item eight D, consideration of resolution R two zero nineteen fifteen, approving intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation for Church Street to Nottingham Lane. Mr. Hymasaw.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Arizona Department of Transportation's five-year improvement plan currently includes twelve point five million dollars for a pavement preservation project called Church Street to Nottingham Lane in fiscal year 2021. Scopely work includes milling the top three inches of existing asphalt and installing a new three-inch asphalt overlay on State Route two sixty from the intersection of East Hall, which is downtown here by McDonald's, heading south on US sixty to the intersection of Nottingham Lane and Wagon Wheel. Over the past two years, the city has been seeking funding to improve the intersection of State Route two sixty, Cup Lake Road and Sholo Lake Road. A.D.O. currently owns and operates the traffic signal at this location. Traffic at this intersection has increased, requiring dedicated right turn lanes and protected left turn aero cycles in all four directions. Some of those are lacking. Better realignment of the lanes approaching the intersection. Better realignment of the lanes approaching the intersection is also needed. Working with our partners at Northern Arizona Council of Governments or NACOG, the Navajo County Subregion is aware of the need for these improvements and has recently agreed to allocate $100,000 for the design of the project in FY 2019 and $800,000 towards construction of the intersection improvements in FY 2021. Federal funding has been grouped together from unallocated Surface Transportation Block Grant or STBG funds and bid savings from other projects over the past few years in our region. The city may not have discussed the opportunity to combine the intersection project with the pavement preservation one as well into one project and construct them at the same time. This will help in both entities be more cost effective and reduce the inconvenience of construction to the public in the same corridor to a single season. The federal STBG funding requires a local match of 5.7%. The city's contribution for design of the project will be $6,045, that's 5.7% of the $100,000 for the current budget year, and the city's contribution for the construction portion of the project will be the $48,356, and that's 5.7% of the $800,000 in fiscal year 2021. A.D.O. is presenting this intergovernmental agreement to the city to confirm combining the projects and the city's agreement to send the STBG funding and local match to A.D.O. as the city's contribution to the newly combined scope of work. A.D.O. staff and city staff continue to work together during the design and construction phases of the project to ensure the most successful intersection improvement possible for the region. Staff recommends adopting the resolution number R2019-15 approving the authorization, authorizing the execution of the intergovernmental agreement, excuse me, between the city of Sholo and the Arizona Department of Transportation for Church Street to Nottingham Lane and authorizing the mayor to sign said agreement. The resolution and the intergovernmental agreement is attached and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? I just want to say thank you for your efforts on doing this and working with NACOG to get them to donate about $900,000, I know you worked hard to make this happen, this is a very dangerous intersection that needs to be corrected in our community and personally for what you've done to make that happen, too. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Any other comments or this time look for a motion? Councilmember Hatch?
I move to adopt resolution number 2019-15 approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental part, excuse me, intergovernmental agreement between the city of Sholo and the Arizona Department of Transportation for Church Street to Nottingham Lane and authorizing the mayor to sign said agreement.
Have a motion, second by Councilmember Kelly, any other discussion?
Let me, let me ask, why is Church Street to Nottingham Lane in here, I'm confused.
Randy, we are almost past that issue.
A.D.O. names their projects in their plan, and I believe a long time ago one of those roads down here was named Church Street or was named Church Street in the A.D.O. planning process, so Hall is downtown Church Street.
Okay.
Okay. I asked the same question, they go off mile and post too, so we were able to nail down exactly where they're at.
Okay, I kept looking, I'm going, where are these things?
You don't know where that street's at, do you?
And they wouldn't let us change the project.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Councilmember Kelly.
Yeah, another question then, Nottingham Lane is out of the city limits, I believe, are we prorated to the city limits or are we just cooperating and going on down there?
Our portion, our funding contribution is for the intersection only, it's only going to be used for the intersection improvements at Sholo Road, Cub Lake Road, and State Route 260, some of that goes into our own right of way, it doesn't contribute to the milling overlay, the broader scope of the work, which is the, I think it's, it's five or six miles of milling overlay, the 12.5 million is going to handle that aspect.
Any other comments? I'll call for the vote, all of them in favor? Any opposed? Does that pass six to zero? Thank you, appreciate it. Next item we have is item 8E, West Reedhead Waterline Replacement, a consideration of award of a construction contract for West Reedhead Waterline Replacement, Mr. Hymasaw.
Thank you. During construction of the Sierra Vista Sewer Replacement Project earlier this year, crews discovered the water main in Rest Reedhead was an aging six-inch asbestos concrete or AC pipe material, while the remaining sections of the subdivision were a newer PVC material. The brittle properties of the aging water main resulted in four water main breaks while the sewer improvements were being completed. Prior to repaving the roadways in Sierra Vista subdivision in the upcoming budget year, the city requires any necessary underground improvements to be completed, the water line or water replacement project was accelerated to be completed as soon as possible. Scope of the work consists of replacing approximately 1,400 linear feet of aging and deteriorating six-inch AC water main with eight-inch PVC water main and installing new water services and fire hydrants. The proposed improvements begin at the intersection of Southeast 8th Avenue and West Reedhead and head east 1,400 feet. Work was designed by city engineering staff with a construction estimate of $169,000. Approvals to construct the water lines have been obtained from ADQ, the project was publicly bid in accordance with statutory requirements with the following results. Apache Underground Excavating at $132,817.50, Apache Equipment Services LLC at $184,165.00, and Standard Construction Company at $357,075.00. In the city's 2019 capital improvement program, our CIP budget funding is allocated for a water project named South Cub Lake Road Waterline with a budget amount of $220,000. Staff proposes using this funding for the West Reedhead project and to incorporate the Cub Lake project, Cub Lake project in the upcoming FY 2020 water CIP budget. Staff recommends award of the construction contract for the West Reedhead Waterline Replacement City of Sholo W1819 to Apache Underground Excavating in amount not to exceed that $132,817.50. The bid tabulation is attached, I'm available for questions.
Any questions, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I just know that we've been in there and I, and I like, well, you just got done saying that we wanted to go in there and get all the water, get everything done before we redo the roads, but I just hope all the people in that subdivision understands that we're going to have them tore up again and they're going to have to rot themselves and everything else and, you know, it's a tragic that we have to because the other one took us, I don't know how many months that was, it was a pretty long time, but, you know, at least get this done and get it done properly the first time.
And we've been letting, anybody we've talked to and then we've been letting them know, you know, we have to do water line next and then we can focus on the roads that take your budget, so that's kind of the normal process and we've been pretty vocal about that down there.
Do we see the road being completed in this calendar year?
I do. If it gets funded as this next budget in July 1, this water main could be done in the next three months and then we can hit it in the fall.
Vice Mayor.
I'll go ahead and make a motion, I move to award the construction contract for the West Reedhead Waterline Replacement City of Sholo Project Number W-1819 to Apache Underground Excavating in amount not to exceed $132,817.50.
Your motions are second, second by Councilmember Kelly, any discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Pass six to zero, thank you. Next item is item 8F, consideration of award of construction contract for Fairway Park Four Waterline Replacement City of Sholo Project Number W1319, Mr. Hymasaw.
All right, one more, thank you, Mayor. The city's fiscal year 2019 and 2020 capital improvement program budget includes a total of $80,000 for water line improvement project labeled Fairway Park Phase Four. Project consists of replacing approximately 7,800 linear feet of aging six-inch AC water main with an eight-inch PVC main, installation of new water services and fire hydrants. Any concrete or asphalt removed during the project will be replaced, the proposed improvements are located in the Fairway Park subdivision between West Cooley and West Mogollon Drive. And my, this is the final, final phase of the water line improvements in Fairway Park. Project was designed by city engineering staff with a construction estimate of $840,000. Approvals to construct the water mains have been obtained from ADQ, project was bid in accordance with statutory requirements with the following results. Rock Country Builders Incorporated, $837,429.00, Central Arizona Civil Construction Company at $874,190.00, Apache Underground Excavating, $886,300.00, and Rolling Specialty Contracting, $890,299.66, and Schultz Construction at $981,280.00. After discussions myself and Public Works Director Bill Cupp, Rock Country Builders has asked to withdraw his bid due to ongoing workload and concerns with the scheduling demands associated with the large scope of the work. Staff recommends award in construction contract therefore Fairway Park Phase Four Waterline Replacement City of Sholo Project Number W1319 to Central Arizona Civil Construction Company in an amount not to exceed that $874,190.00. The bid tab is available and I am available for any questions.
Thank you. We've had a, Mr. Robert Harson would like to speak on this item here, we'll, we'll do that, allow him at this time. Just state your name and address if you can, Robert, please.
Yeah, I'd like to formally introduce myself, I'm, my name's Robert Carlson, I'm a local contractor, president of Rock Country Builders, I was born and raised here and came from my family of contractors. I have a copy of things I was going to go through and this is my first public speaking, so if I mess it up, you'll have notes here. You don't mind? Thank you. We have done prior contracts with the city of Sholo, the two most recent ones, Sierra Vista Sewer and McNeil Water, that is currently in progress. We, we are the responsible bidder of the recent Fairway Park Waterline Bid, we came in at $837,429, just below the engineer's estimate and higher, and then the next higher bidder of $36,761 difference. I'm keep, well, I guess this isn't on the agenda, I didn't know how this meeting was going to go, so I'll skip to the next one. We were notified to come in and sign the contract to be presented for award at your previous board meeting, unfortunately since that time, we were backed into a corner and given two options that resulted in being forced to withdraw our bid. Basically that consisted of withdraw your bid or we'll reject your bid and you can forfeit your bonding, so that was what I would consider forced to do so. We've notified our bonding company of our withdrawal and we pray that this has no negative effect on our future bonding ability. We do believe the city has met, or we do believe the city has, has met the criteria, has not met the criteria to reject or bid our bid ethically or legally, and we pray that supporting our position on this has no negative effect on our current job we are doing, we have going. I have reason to believe, well, that's, that's, I didn't know how the agenda was going to go, so that's, that that would be presented for us to award to Central today. I am giving, from another perspective, not likely to have been presented, the opportunity to review, and I think that's very important. I was informed in our 510, 2019 meeting that the city council was upset with Rock Country over the Sierra Vista job and that is now being combined with the engineering department with McNeil Water to pass judgment without the facts. We humbly accept any shortcomings we may own that we were not aware of and apologize in the event after review, we did not meet expectations. Yet not in view the board members having this thrown at you, we could not control this and had higher expectations and our goals to work things out, and unfortunately fell upon deaf ears and the process to take this bid from us was determined before process ever started. Thank you for your consideration. Attached is Exhibit A, is the corresponding, all the correspondence, it was between me and the city up to this point. I did not believe I had a, any kind of a response or a chance to respond. It may take the piles of documentation, pictures and video we have to get to the bottom of this, I was blindsided by the action taken on Fairway Park and wish no hard feelings in defending our position. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Bill or Shane, do you want to enlighten us here a little more?
I'll go ahead and start, the next two pages actually here, what's called Exhibit A, really kind of lays out the reasons why the city has concerns about the ability for the contractor to complete the project. We asked in, because that was the case and we had concerns, we asked for additional qualifications of the bidder, which is part of the bid documents, and that is the, the last portion of this. I don't know if you want to take time to read through this now, to take a look at, at how we laid out our case here, but, but that's basically what this is all based on, and it's all per the plans and specifications and contract and bid documents. In addition to that, one thing that's missing is there was a follow-up email that I had sent as well, offering Mr. Carlson two options, one would be to withdraw his bid and not forfeit his bid bond, and the other was that staff would recommend that we reject his bid and possibly withhold part or all of his bid bond. He responded in writing withdrawing his bid, which is on the fourth page, I'm sorry, the fifth page, at the very bottom. Actually, no, that, that was the first response, so what we did in this letter was we asked him to, gave him five days per the contract to, to respond by giving us information regarding the schedule, his schedule, his ability to bond and the equipment and labor force that he had available to complete the project, and his response starts on page four or three, does not address any of the information that we had requested him to provide to us. So based on that, we sent him the other letter, or I believe it was an email, giving him the two options that I described earlier.
Any may have any questions, Councilmember Critten?
I've got a statement, based on everything I've heard so far, I'm, I personally am not wanting to vote on this tonight because I'm not sure that we have all the information from all the sides and everything, and everything being thrown at us, I think we need a little more time to find out what is really going on.
And staff does apologize for that, we were surprised as well.
I totally agree.
Well, I'm just going back here, just to comment.
Read that.
That, that Rick, Robert, I don't know that this council has ever been upset with Rock Country over Sierra Vista sewer job, I myself can say that I've drove, drove the job, I was surprised that we approved the final on, on the project, I took several pictures and shared them with staff of things that weren't completed on the project that should have been completed in a timely manner, and I know you continue to work and get those things completed, but it wasn't this council's decision that they were upset with you. Okay, so I want, I wanted to just pass that, that on to you as well.
Mayor, if I could, I think that was basically my interpretation, if the mayor is showing us pictures and, and has shown some dissatisfaction with the condition of a project, then I think I construe that as.
then I think I construe that as you being concerned or upset about how that project is going.
Not a council at all, for sure.
Right, I see what you're saying, sir.
I just clarify that. And I agree with the comments here that have been shared. Councilmember Kelly?
I'm not understanding for sure, has the contractor chosen to withdraw the bid? Say again? I, I understand you're saying you did it under compulsion, but is that what you're saying? Did you withdraw?
I, I had two options, one to re-
Let's just come on here.
The way I read that is, my bid is rejected. You rejected the bid, so I have two choices. One, withdraw, which I put that as part of my withdrawal, or have your bonding company lose your bond. Cause you're rejected anyway, so you can reject and lose your bond, or you can just forfeit, or withdraw, I mean, I'm sorry, withdraw. That's not an option. I, I don't see if that's an option.
We've had a couple of circumstances in the past fourteen years since I've been here where we felt that a contractor wasn't qualified or wasn't ready or didn't have the resources to perform a project, and we met with them informally and let them know if they withdrew their bid, then we wouldn't keep their bid bond. Bid bond on this project is eighty-some thousand dollars. That's a lot of money.
Morgan, you want to enlighten us legally here and stuff?
Exactly.
Question, and you want me to enlighten you?
May I have a question?
The city manager has a comment that I can answer.
Until tonight, I didn't, we had a understanding that Mr. Carlson had voluntarily withdrawn his bid. Based, based on the, his discussion that he is not, he doesn't want to voluntarily withdraw. I think we need to take the couple of weeks, as the council suggested, and get back to the council at the next meeting.
Councilmember Kelly?
I was gonna observe, I believe, the way it's set in the agenda. We can even have executive session on this tonight, can we not? Just start the other one, right?
No, the executive session's on another item.
Not on any item that we need?
No, it's not listed that way. It was on the last item on the exchange of properties.
Thank you for the correction. I, I think we just need to postpone this.
Do we need to motion that, postpone it?
Table it, or what do you want to do?
Continue till next meeting. They can table it till the next meeting.
All right, we won't have any other discussion on it. Thank you for being here.
Just a couple of things that were, I just want to go back to the response when they were asking me to respond. That's why, what he sent me was a typical bidder's qualification, which I've just done too, huge job. I mean, what, I, I have to ask, what are you looking for? I mean, you're my recommendation to some degree. When I bid a job and I put on, uh, uh, your references, the City of Cholo is the reference. I, so it's kind of a, a question of exactly what are you asking me for? There is no exact as far as like equipment and stuff, as you'll read through. I mean, in a phone call, I can have caterpillar lined up all the way around this building. It's not a matter of, I don't understand the question or what I was trying to get, create dialogue is, what are you trying to ask me? Cause I don't, I don't know what the question is. Manpower in the phone call, I can put twenty-five men on the job. It's, it's how, nothing will get any more productive. It's what is the question? Are we, I felt I was just being shut down, and if you look at my response, by the time I responded, he'd already rejected me. So my, my response is after I was rejected. I was just saying, well, we could have had a dialogue, we could have talked about it, we could, there was other options. The Sierra Vista Sewer, I think it's important, the problem there is, is going back into all the city shortcomings really as far as all those water lines that leaked in there, and they were not disclosed to me. And there were some ugly things that I had to get into that I don't, I didn't have to get into, and I shouldn't have actually got into. And it's a no-win situation for me. I can see that nobody's happy with it. I didn't win, I didn't make any money, I didn't win, I, I lost all the way around, and I was forced to accept the change order where they were gonna shut the job down. So I don't think that's good work relation, really. So I'm not any happier with the Sierra Vista Sewer than anybody here. And I think it was the toughest job this town's ever done, as far as sewer goes. That Watermain, uh, emergency bid, which I put together a number in the middle of that foreign emergency bid, is cause these, and I have video of all this. I have video of the streets, the streets collapsing. Most of the people that were kind of unpleasant to work around up there, when they finally walked over and looked in the ditch, it actually made them dizzy, they had nothing else to say. They realized what was going on down there, and I have some serious, serious destruction going on. And I think that needs to be taken into consideration. And that's all.
Thank you.
Well, well, I, I just got a quick comment now that he made that comment. I'm not sure that you want to do work for the city. I mean, I, I don't know how to even take that. Am I the only person saying that things that way? I, I mean, if we got an ugly relationship with a contractor, that, is it gonna get worse?
I don't, I don't think we have an ugly relationship with the contractor. I think based on the discussion tonight, we need to sit down with the contractor and figure out what we're gonna do and bring it back to the council next meeting.
So how do we dispose of this action tonight? By table? We can't just ignore it?
You, you can continue it until your next meeting. You can continue an agenda item till the next meeting. You, you can continue the agenda item till the next meeting.
By motion or just by?
Sure, if you want to do it by motion, let's do it by motion.
Let me make that motion that we continue this, one under advisement, working with the contractor.
Second.
What we can do.
Yeah, we have a motion, we have a second to continue item eight F, I believe, so a continuation on it. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, although in favor. See that pass six to zero. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I just add one more thing? There are a couple of documents that will complete this. I want to make sure that council has that, so I don't know if the city attorney can help me.
Bring any more documentation either one, either, anybody wants to bring on this matter will be.
It's basically just a response of mine that isn't included in here, okay?
We have any problem with adding stuff to this item in the future? Thank you.
Will I be receiving the same?
You got it. You've got it.
I'm not sure which one I'm missing.
We'll make sure you have the same packet the council has.
All right, our next item is item G, Consideration of Resolution R two zero nineteen fourteen, approving intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Revenue related to uniform administration and city transaction privilege tax, Mr. Johnson.
I'm back. Last time for tonight. This IGA was negotiated by the League of Arizona Cities and Towns and a consortium of city and town representatives. Additionally, several attorneys and tax experts from many cities and towns reviewed and commented on the language during the process, resulting in a document that provides a maximum level of information and assurances for the cities possible. It is a complete revision to the previous version adopted by the city in 2015. Local transportation, local transaction privilege tax administration is governed by Arizona Revised Statutes forty-two dash six zero zero one. This statute requires the DOR to administer the transaction privilege and use taxes imposed by all cities and towns and enter into an IGA with each city and town. The IGA covers all aspects of local tax administration. First and foremost, the IG, IGA addresses confidentiality, including the authorized handling of confidential taxpayer information, expectations for the discrete use of taxpayer data to prevent unauthorized disclosure, and the process to follow in the event of a disclosure. There's also guidance on the use of aggregated taxpayer data for public reporting and analysis. The IGA includes clear direction regarding the sharing of general taxpayer license information, legal interpretations and written guidance, rate and fee tables, and any other pertinent tax information that needs to be shared between cities and towns and the DOR. The IGA also provides guidance for handling voluntary disclosure by taxpayers, opposing agreements in lieu of litigation, and sets up responsibilities and authorities of both parties in terms of code or statute interpretations and legal support for protests. The term of this IGA runs on a calendar year basis, with the provision for automatic annual renewal with reauthorization by council and the DOR only being required following the year the DOR is subject to sunset review. Staff recommends approving resolution R twenty nineteen dash fourteen. Any questions?
Questions, comments? Councilmember Crittenen?
I move to adopt resolution R two oh one nine dash fourteen, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Revenue regarding the uniform administration licensing, collection and auditing of transaction privilege tax, use tax, severance tax, jet fuel excise and use tax, and rental occupancy taxes imposed by the state or cities or towns.
Any other tax you want to cover in there? We have a motion, is there a second? Taken by Councilmember Leach. Any discussion?
I wish we could have done that in English. I, I don't know, that just went right over my ball head.
You seconded it. Any other discussion, all those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass six to zero.
Thank you.
Hard for you to say, Randy.
Next item we have is item eight H, Consideration of Ordinance number two zero nineteen oh five, authorizing the exchange of parcels of real property of substantial or equal value pursuant to ARS nine dash four oh seven, and authorizing agreement of exchange of real property. Which one of you guys want to take this?
I'll do it.
And know that this item can also go into executive session if need be.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The city owns a parcel of property known as Navajo County Assessor's Parcel Number two twelve oh seven, zero zero seven A. Just shown as a parcel A on the subject property map. The adjacent property owner to this property is the White Mountain Bible Church, and they have been interested in purchasing a portion of the property to expand their church facilities. Ewell Barnes of North Meadow LLC is the owner of property that adjoins our property on the, the meadow. And they had approached the city to see if we were interested in purchasing a portion of their property in the meadow. This property is approximately point seven six acres. We feel it would be beneficial to the city to use as additional parking for the Cholo Bluff Trail area. Bill, are you bringing that up on the map? Okay, thank. So ARS nine four oh seven requires that any exchange of property be done by ordinance after the exchange has been published in the local newspaper. The exchange of property must be for substantially equal value. A notice of intent has been published in the local newspaper as required by state statutes. The White Mountain Bible Church will purchase approximately point seven six acres of the North Meadow LLC for sixty-six thousand, two hundred ninety-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. Will exchange this property for the portion of AP number two twelve zero seven, zero zero seven A, consisting of approximately one acre near White Mountain Bible Church. This ordinance authorizes the mayor to execute the necessary documents to trade the city-owned property for the privately-owned property as shown on the attached maps. The parcels are of substantial equally value as the property adjacent to the White Mountain Bible Church has an easement that runs across it to gain access to the Airstream Mobile Home Park. And in addition, the White Mountain Bible Church has agreed to maintain the tree conservation easement as they did on the previous property that was exchanged with them, maintain those trees along Cholo Lake Road. So ARS nine four oh seven authorizes an exchange of parcels of the property of substantially equal value. Staff recommends that the council adopt ordinance number twenty nineteen oh five and approve the attached agreement for the exchange of real property. Available for any questions that you have.
Can you go back to that other slide, please, that other property? Just point out that we also own everything kind of to the west of this, is that correct?
To the east.
Sorry, east of this.
Yeah, so if you see that, there's kind of a little black line right there that kind of runs along there and everything to the east of that down, that's actually beyond the creek, but we own all that now.
We are taking, just kind of squaring up the frontage of what we have and then maybe the new parking lots and stuff over there.
And that's a fairly, you can't really tell from looking at this, but that's a fairly level piece of property right there. Conducive to adding more parking and so maybe restrooms in that area.
You have a question?
I think you said this, but I, I want to ask the question again, so, so it's a hundred percent understood. This is not costing the city anything, is that correct?
Well, yeah, we, yeah, we did agree to pay the closing costs in the survey.
But I mean, the difference between the properties, we aren't paying any of that. Okay, got it.
We had to pay for some legal descriptions and then the closing costs of the escrow.
Got it.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, I'll ask the city clerk to read this ordinance, since all council members have a copy.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Cholo, Arizona, authorizing the exchange of parcels of real property of substantially equal value pursuant to Arizona law statutes nine four oh seven.
Thank you. Need a motion now for ordinance number two zero nineteen oh five, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number twenty nineteen dash oh five and further move to approve the agreement for the exchange of real estate, real estate property or real property.
Thank you. Have a motion, we have a second by Councilmember Hatch. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, although in favor. Any opposed? See that pass six to zero. Next item we have on the agenda is a summary of current events. I'd love to, council members, for current events. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Just like to announce, if you've been driving through town and everything else and driving up towards Pine Top on their Blue Ridge High School board, you'll see an advertisement in there for White Mountain Meals and Wheels. And so they're sponsoring and trying to help raise some money for us, for the Meals and Wheels program here in Cholo. So it's, it's kind of broadening out from Cholo to different parts of the White Mountains up here. So, and on that behalf, the White Mountain Association of Realtors are presenting a wine tasting event opening to the public, May thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, five o'clock PM to eight PM at Matty's Beef and Bar, or Beef and Beer at, in Pine Top. Five dollar donation, will give you five taste, uh, taste testing tickets taken at the door, and then all the proceeds will go to the Meals and Wheels that day. So it's something that if you can go up there and have some fun and, and the Meals and Wheels are gonna prosper for some of that stuff. So something good is going on in the community. Next thing is, May twenty-fifth, this Saturday, is the first Farmers Market Art Walk of this year. It's our ten-year anniversary. It's open from nine to two on this first weekend, but I believe Diane North has got a, every one of the spots sold out, so it should be a really good year for us this year, and looking forward to having some fun out there. So if you'd like to come and, and look that and have some big goods or even just stuff to buy for the house, just come on out and have a great time. That's this Saturday, May twenty-fifth. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other council members? Want to give a little update? Was able to attend the recon convention. We just got back this evening, able to do that in Las Vegas with the city manager as well as our economic director. We had about twelve appointments with different businesses, different people looking at possible future expansion into Cholo. We have some real key meetings that hopefully will cease the effects of that meeting here in the next year or so. It was good to be, it's interesting how things are changing, how you even see the landscape of that convention changing because of retail marketing is definitely changing in, in the way, in the economy of how things are, are going. So you can definitely feel the pulse a little different uptick there. For the time, city manager, his report.
Thank you, Mayor. The twenty-first annual project clean sweep opened to City of Cholo residents continues this week with free green waste dumping through Saturday, May twenty-fifth, from eight AM to four PM at three D's Green Waste, eight ninety Center Pit Road. And then on Monday, June third through Friday, June seventh, we'll have our bulky item pickup on the regularly scheduled trash day. The same week through Saturday, June eighth, residents can haul debris for free to Lompine Transfer Station from eight AM to four PM. The transfer station will be closed from noon to twelve-thirty for their lunch. And you'll need to take a current. And you'll need to take a current Cholo utility bill or identification showing the physical address within the city of Cholo city limits. As has been mentioned, a couple of them, but I'll go over some others, there's, this weekend is, it's gonna be busy with a number of events. The annual men's Memorial Day softball tournament with games on Saturday and Monday, the games begin seven AM on Saturday. At the Senior and Pondrosa Fields, LDS Stake Center Field and Woodland Lake Art Fields. And they'll play until ten PM. The games will continue Monday morning starting at seven AM and the championship games will be eight thirty PM Monday night. As has been mentioned by Councilman Osop, the Cholo Main Street Farmers Market starts this weekend or this Saturday. Also, as mentioned earlier in the meeting, there's a Memorial Day service next Monday at ten AM at the Cholo Cemetery. And this Saturday also, the twenty-fifth, the first annual garden expo will be held. At the White Mountain Community Garden, five twenty North Ninth Place from ten AM to three PM. They'll have exhibits, speakers, vendors, food trucks and different information for gardening there. If you need more information on the gardening, www.wmcgarden.org. And finally, I'll mention that this week is the National Public Works Week. We want to recognize and thank our public works employees that do an incredible job providing. Clean water, efficient sewer system, building repairing roads, removing snow, controlling ice. They also take care of our parks and our buildings and they do an excellent job and we want to thank them for their public service and all they do for the city of Cholo. And recognize them this week, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on items? How about scheduling the meetings, any meetings that need to be brought up or scheduled in addition?
No, just your next regular meetings, when we'll meet again.
All right, seeing no other business, solid during this meeting.